Or.
You've got seven.
Yeah. All right, I have six o'clock, so unless there's an alternative, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission at six o'clock on Wednesday, May 19. The only announcements I have are really related to the Monday night activities of the Marin City Council. As you may know, we had two new commissioners confirmed for three-year terms, Deborah Evolz and Tom Jensen. Khalil Saliba is our new liaison member from the city council. And Tom Panetta is our liaison from BPW. Of course, by statute, the mayor and the city manager are also ex officio liaison members with us. And we're glad to have all of them there, all of them with us, and we look forward to their contributions. Anne Marie is trying to schedule what she's calling an orientation. It's really, I think, an update for some of us and others, it's an introduction to the standards of being a commissioner, things like FOIA, things like causing problems with SIRIOM meetings, etc. So that looks to be sometime, although the date's not set yet, mid to late June or early July, and all of us will be invited to that. It is also just further announcement, the likelihood that we will begin meeting in person at some point in the not-too-distant future. The city is working on trying to arrange an audio-visual connection so that persons can participate who are not in the actual room, whether we be at the city council chambers, or whether we be back to the conference room at the history museum. That's not yet in place, but that's what they're trying to work on. And I very much support the notion that we should have some connectivity capability for persons who can't attend the meeting, maybe out of town or otherwise unavailable, not just for commissioners, but for members of the public. So those things are in process, and we will keep you posted as we hear. It's really in Anne Marie's court, and I spoke to the mayor today, and he's anxious to get some of this done. He noted that June 1st, the commissioners in Rehoboth are going back to in-person meetings. So we will probably follow not too far behind that. Unless there are no other announcements, I'm gonna move on to new business, which is the first agenda item. And the first one is our reorganization. As you may know, under Article 4A of our bylaws, every year after the first meeting after an election of Marin City Council, it is the obligation of the planning commission to reorganize. We have three officers that we need to fill. They are secretary, vice chair, and chair. And I'm going to open the floor for nominations for secretary.
At this time, I would like to nominate Sumner Crosby as secretary.
Thank you, Melanie. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, someone move the nominations opposed.
So moved.
Nancy moves, Joe second. All in favor, say aye, signify by raising your hand or say aye.
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 Thank you. Sumner, you are now secretary. Congratulations. On the role of vice chair, do I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Melanie Moser for vice chair.
Thank you, Sumner. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Oh, so moves. John, you second. There you go. So we have it moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Melanie, welcome as vice chair. I will now turn the meeting over to you as the newly installed vice chair to conduct the election for chair.
Yes, do we have any nominations for chair? John?
I nominate Drew McKay.
Anyone second the nomination?
Second that. Hardly.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate your support, and looks like we've got quite a bit of interesting stuff ahead of us. One of the subjects in our reorganization I'd like to discuss is our meeting time. Since we have some new commissioners, we have some commissioners who have employment issues. We have some commissioners who indeed have sort of a bi-city existence. I wonder if it's worth reexamining our timing. As you recall, originally, the commission was meeting at seven o'clock, as was most other city entities, including the Marin City Council. We were the first to move it up because we had rather lengthy meetings, and by 11 o'clock, a number of us were fading into the woodwork. So we moved it to six. We also had, as a result of a lot of the work we were doing, special meetings periodically, where we had to have two meetings a month to handle some of the applications and stuff. We still have two significant applications outstanding, Fisher's Cove and White Pond Meadow. There may be others coming, but we at least have those two that are almost pregnant, right, Janelle?
Correct.
But we're not sure when they're gonna come, but they could come anytime. The Marin City Council moved their meeting from seven to 6:30. I don't know what the pleasure of the commission is, whether we leave it at six, or whether you prefer a later time. I really would like to just open it up for any expression of preference.
I certainly wouldn't mind it being a little later, 6:30 or seven, as a start time.
I'll agree with that.
Khalil, would that make it easier for you if we started like Marin City Council at 6:30?
It doesn't make six or 6:30, I don't have a preference.
Nancy, do you have a preference?
No, no preference.
Bob?
I'd go for 6:30, just because of things I have to do after four.
Sumner?
I have no preference.
John?
After three o'clock's my only preference, so 6:30 works for me.
Okay. Tom Panetta, do you have a preference?
Whatever works for everyone else.
Well, should we try 6:30, since we've had an expression of support for that time, and see how that works going forward for a couple of months, and see if that makes any difference, makes it better? So let me have a, just because it's a, it's, we have the option in the bylaws to change the time, but let's just, let's make it more formal. Melanie, I'm gonna take it, you made a motion to make it at 6:30. Is there any, who would second that? John, do you want to second that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, henceforth, we'll meet at 6:30 unless that becomes problematic, or we get inundated with much too much. All right, let's move on then to Item C2, which is discussion of potential recommendation of Marin City Council regarding wetlands buffer subcommittee recommendations regarding wetlands buffer ordinance. Janelle, do you want to refresh everyone's recollection, and then we'll turn to whomever's gonna report the results?
Sure, so the planning commission had a subcommittee working on wetlands buffer. You guys made a recommendation, council adopted an ordinance regarding the wetlands buffer. The time the council adopted the ordinance, they sent it back to the commission for consideration to see if things needed to be changed, or if another, if other subject matter experts needed to be brought in. The subcommittee did discuss it. At that time, they discussed that they wanted to see it kind of in practice before they made any recommendations to any changes to an ordinance that just got adopted. And they also believed that they had had sufficient subject matter experts based on the subject matter experts that had attended the multiple water workshops. They'd reached out to wetland delineators, and the fact that it was based, a lot of the basis was coming from the Sussex County, where they had multiple wetland delineators, multiple engineers, University of Delaware, Denrick, C-grants, on that subcommittee, on that committee, working on creating those updates for the wetlands buffer.
And this was a committee that was previously chaired by our vice chair, Kate Carnahan. John, are you gonna speak to that, or who is?
Yeah, I will speak to that. We felt pretty strongly about this when we first put this forth to Mayor and City Council. And like Janelle had said, they wanted to run it for a while to see how it went, and if we needed to revisit anything. And at this point in time, I don't, I haven't heard any need to revisit, or I haven't heard that it isn't working, or it has been an undue burden. If someone else has other information for me, then I think we kind of keep it in place as it is.
All right, is that what you're moving, that we declined to make amendments to the ordinance that we've sent forward?
Is, I know that, Joe, you had done some work on this with me. I'm curious as to your thoughts, but I feel that it's good to go the way it is. And I'm just curious if any other commissioners have come across anything in their dealings. So any more information, you know, before I throw that out there. But yes, that's definitely where I'm heading with this.
Joe?
I don't want to say we were working in a vacuum, but the public response really surprised me to this. And I'm sure it will be more, but wait and see.
Any other commissioner have any feedback or concerns about leaving it as we originally recommended and adopted? Sumner?
Well, I just, I'm curious about Joe's comment. What do you mean by working in a vacuum?
We had very little public comment during the process, whether we were at meetings, or... And then, one that was presented, there was, but found out by reading, you know, Cape Gazette, that there was opposition to this. That's okay.
That raises, that raises the general question. I mean, I wonder if we need to change the way we're codifying or, you know, doing these subcommittee meetings. I mean, and also, I don't really know how much you want to have, you know, major public engagement in the subcommittee meetings. I'm not really sure what the, how the process should work, so I'm just... I'm curious. I mean, I don't like the idea of people being surprised and getting upset. We've watched a lot of stuff go through the papers over the last, you know, month, two months, regarding various issues that we've discussed. And I'm just wondering how we can engage people more in a constructive way, rather than have this sort of reactive process.
Yeah. To the point of public input, I feel like, you know, we followed all the processes. It wasn't, you know, a fast process to begin with, and there was definitely opportunity for public input. And I think what happened in this case is, it was reported on, and then the public was like, oh, now I care, because it's one of those hot-button items. I'm not so sure how informed everybody was, but there have been multiple opportunities for the public to be involved throughout that process. And we did reach out, and we did go to different education. When we did the water workshop, you know, that was a big focus of ours as well. So I think it just kind of is what it is at this point. And I'm curious if Janelle or anybody from the office, or any of the engineers, have had any problems with it thus far.
So I'm gonna follow up, is when we, when I got involved with this, we had a number of people showing up at the in-person meetings, providing, I mean, we had a couple people just handwriting and submitting written comments that were definitely taken into consideration. So we did have some good public hearing comments when we were, when we were meeting. But I have not heard any comments. Nobody has submitted a major subdivision that requires the use of the section of code yet. So, you know, I think, you know, as multiple commission members had said, they just want to kind of see what it looks like, to see if it works first, and then, you know, come back and make any suggestions.
Khalil, do you have any insight or comments about the ability for people to engage in these things?
Um, my view generally, I mean, in watching the last five years, different commissions and different meetings, and I actually, I'm surprised, because I thought this is a very engaged community, Louis, that is, with citizens engaging in the public policy process. And, you know, I think there's ample coverage, there's ample notice, obviously, to citizens to engage. And it just, it's actually kind of a head-scratcher for me that people have not weighed in on these issues.
Well, let me just say, as a matter of principle, I'm sorry, Nancy, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think people did weigh in. And, and, you know, we followed the public consultation process. And at this point, I think, I think, I think the order in which we have it is right. I mean, I don't think at the subcommittee level, when we're all, in a sense, in some ways, at a learning stage for some of the issues, that that's, that, you know, we go through a process where those subcommittees bring something back to the planning commission. Then the planning commission as a whole makes, puts together a public consultation process. And I think, I think that's generally worked. I mean, I think it is troublesome when we don't see the level of engagement that we might wish. It's also troublesome when we see comments coming in after the process, as opposed to in the process. But it's hard to avoid that completely. You know, I'm not sure what we could do that would change all of that. But all of that said, I feel that we went through the process. It went forward to city council, it was adopted by city council. And at this point, it seems odd to me that we would reassess it so soon, and without anything having actually gone through having this be applied to it. And I think that's where we may have some lessons learned and need to go back to it, but not until that point.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Melanie, you wanted to?
I was going to suggest that perhaps we should publish meeting minutes and have them on the planning website, so that if someone is interested enough, they can go and see what we discussed and follow up on it.
Anne Marie, can we hire another, Janelle?
Because right now, the meeting minutes do get published, but they get published to the agenda, like at tonight's hour. And then, so we do that. But don't forget, I also need help with minutes.
Does everybody, you actually can get all the old minutes on the website now. Sumner?
So I wanna, the reason I brought this up is I agree with, I think, what I heard Nancy saying about, you know, the subcommittees are, you know, I mean, you know, we count up these subcommittees, and I see them more, as Nancy suggested, as a learning discussion times. I think probably the best time to have the public really engaged is when we're meeting, when we're bringing this forward to the entire planning commission, either in a formal public hearing or whatever. But in that learning process, in that phase where the subcommittee is meeting and banging around ideas, we've been doing a lot of this in a lot of different areas. I wonder if there isn't a way of putting up some of the working information that we're working with. I mean, you know, like, with annexation, we've got, we've got a number of things that we've been kicking around. And, you know, they're drafts, they're, they're just straw documents, they're just throwing things out. They're not formal draft ordinances yet, but they're sort of working materials with which we will build ordinance, you know, draft ordinances. I'm just wondering if there's a way of capturing those on the website, so that people understand where we're headed, what we're talking about, in addition to the minutes, because sometimes the minutes are fairly light. And yes, I'm a terrible minute taker. But, you know, I just wonder if there, some of the ancillary data that we're using can't be hung off of these subcommittees.
So I do try to put a lot of that in on the website, especially for each subcommittee. But if you want more, I can definitely add more to the, to the subcommittee's websites.
Bob?
I think one of the things that happens, though, is you have people who tune in. There are some people who are always on. And there are some people who are occasionally on, but the actual number of, call it informed folks, is 100, 150? It's, it's not much, until, I mean, you see the city council members, you see planning commission members and some others every time, and then a big attendance in one of our meetings, 44 people. So you're really communicating with 150 or so, probably less than that, people. And then it shows up in the newspaper and everybody. But I think, you know, if you make it so that people can write into subcommittees or whatever, and get there, or in the water early, maybe you make some engagement and get a little more feedback. But I think when we're, some committee reports to the planning commission, and we have a public hearing, that's, that's the time to be there.
Well, tonight, for example, we have 21 participants on this, at this meeting. It is not the most robust agenda, but I want to make a couple of comments in general to the issue of how the subcommittees can operate. Number one, I think we all agree that we want public input as much as possible, as early as possible, so we can consider it. So I think there is no, while we are in a learning process on the subcommittee level, I think it is not bad to get others involved in it. And I would suggest that if possible, we reach out and invite citizens. Go to Khalil, go to other members of the council, see who's been talking about these subjects, and see if they want to join the subcommittee, and meet with the subcommittee on a regular basis. There's no limitation on that. It'll all come back to the planning commission, we'll have written comment period, we'll have public hearing, we will go forward in the usual way. But the earlier we start engagement, I think the better. The other criticism we've heard about subcommittees is that they've been meeting during the day. So I would like to suggest some subcommittee meetings be held at night. I know that's a burden on people, but we want to address that maybe it's a straw man, I don't know. But let's try and occasionally have a meeting at night and see if that really brings in a different audience. I don't know that it will, but until we test it, I'm not sure. I do know, however, that the Cape Gazette has been pretty faithful in publishing a little blip about our subcommittee meetings on a regular basis. So the word is out there, if people want to know, they go to the website of the city. It's easy to find out what meetings happen on what day. And we can only take a horse to water, we can't make him drink. So I just want us to make every effort we can to engage the public as early and thoroughly as possible. It helps us get a better product, and it avoids last-minute kerfuffles like we've been experiencing more recently. So do I have a motion, John, from you to go forward on this without making additional changes?
Drew, I have one more comment.
All right, Joe.
The general public is used to seeing us review subdivisions and opposing conditions, and making improvements, suggestions. And the general public is always perceives that what we do affects the other guy. You know, it's not them, it's always the other guy who's getting these conditions put on them and making changes. General public doesn't have to add trees or move things, this, that, the other thing. But when we start changing ordinances and presenting them to mayor and city council, one, it affects everybody. That's one, oof, you know, people are surprised. So it's just something to mention upfront during the meetings, that this will affect everybody, not just the other guy.
Thank you, Joe. John, do I have a motion?
Yeah, maybe that we continue with the buffer zone ordinance in place until it's been used and revisit if we need to.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go seconds. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. There is one other reorganization matter that I overtly, I inadvertently overlooked, and I apologize. I'm going to reappoint unless there's objection, Joe Hockner, to be our liaison to H Park. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Joe, you're on again, buddy.
Oh, boy.
All right, let's move on to the reports under Section D, Annexation Zone Subcommittee.
So, we, we, we spent the last meeting having hearing from Nancy, who put together a fabulous sort of overview and analysis of open space issues and opportunities for sort of aspects of further defining open space. I think we all kind of agree that there's a need to do a better job of defining what open space is, and where it can happen, and how it's being used, and a number of other things. We, we've just introduced it. I understand that the subdivision sort of overhaul committee that they've asked us to sort of take the first crack at dealing with open space, and we'll share what we've got. So we're just getting going. But, but I'm encouraged by the discussion. I really like where, how we've been going. You know, we're still a ways from having draft ordinance, but... Good.
Would it be inappropriate for you to circulate the open space analysis that Nancy did for all of our edification at this time?
Nancy, I'm gonna ask you what you think. I mean, I think that's fine.
It's on the website.
Oh, there you go.
Under the Annexation Zone Subcommittee. So it's there, as is Melanie's presentation about traditional laborhood design. So I didn't, they're both, they're both on the website. I make, try to make sure all that gets on the website.
Thank you. So that speaks exactly to my point about ancillary data earlier. I don't know whether I've spoken about Melanie's presentation, but it was an excellent presentation as well. It spurred a lot of really interesting conversation. And I think one of the real benefits of this whole COVID period is the fact that now, if you can't attend the meeting for whatever reason, and you don't have to wait for however long, for minutes, you can go and find the entire meeting in YouTube and watch the whole thing, which I think is fabulous. So for anybody who hasn't seen it, they can go and see these subcommittee meetings that we've had, and combine them with the, with the materials that Janelle has put on the website.
And as I said earlier, Anne Marie's working on trying to find a way to keep that available in the future, which I wholeheartedly agree, and I've already written to Mayor and others about that. All right, is that it for annexation? Sounds like you're making progress, but you got a ways to go, which is great.
Yep.
John, anything else on floodplain?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Melanie, you're floodplain, John is buffers at the moment.
Yeah. We had a meeting going over the comments that we received from the state and the Corps. And we hit one, one item that was seen to indicate a discrepancy from one section to another in the code. And we were very lucky that Janelle has been able to set up a meeting with, was it the Corps or the state who's coming?
It's the state represent to, who goes, that works with FEMA, so it's kind of like a hybrid.
Okay. And we have a meeting with them this coming Friday at 11:00 to go over this issue.
Right.
So hopefully, we'll get that resolved and be ready to go.
Terrific. Any questions for floodplain? Sea level rise? Sumner, or whomever you want to address that?
Well, I'll take a crack at it. I mean, yeah, obviously, sea level rises has been a topic of much discussion in the public recently. And, you know, I'm still working through a bunch of the public comments that the, that were submitted to the Mayor and City Council for their public hearing. But I think it's safe to, to say that one thing we need to do is do a better job of, and this is the reason I said what I said earlier, a better job of sharing all the information that we're using sort of as background information. I think that there's, the data that go into the sea level rise calculations are varied. The consequences of sea level rise are varied. And I think, you know, given what happened on Monday night with this new committee, I'm not sure how we proceed, and so that was the question I had for, for you, Drew. You know, how, how we move forward, I think there's still a role for the planning commission in examining sea level rise. But I'm hoping that we will, you know, have a seat at the table whenever this executive committee forms on sea level rise. We've put a lot of work in, and I sure hope we're not gonna just be cast aside. And we have a lot more work to do. So I'm looking forward to seeing how we can share any and all information that we've put together, as well as other things that we could bring together to round out that information, to make it more understandable, to make it more applicable. The state, for example, has done an awful lot in the last year. Several of us, I think Drew, you were on there, and maybe Bob, did the flood-ready community training that the state put on, and there was a lot of very good information did the, the flood ready community training that the state put on, and there was a lot of very good information that I've used pieces of before, but they've now got whole new sections of information that helped to put a much more robust picture together. I'd like to find a way of, of, of sort of writing that up, basically building a guide to all those data so that people can at their, you know, at their leisure, on their schedule, look through a lot of the information that we've been using. So I guess that's all I've, I've got, but I am curious sort of how we're to proceed given what happened on Monday night with this new ad hoc executive.
Trying to answer that question in part. First of all, as my note said today, we'll take up data sourcing next month because I think it is important to catalog and perhaps suggest to others that there are avenues that need to be pursued more fully than have yet to be examined in depth by us or by anybody else. For everybody's benefit, let me review just slightly and Khalil, correct me if I misspeak. There is a special, it's been called an executive committee, ad hoc committee, whatever. It's a committee being set up by Mayor and City Council over the next month. It's not going to happen immediately. It will be working through the auspices of University of Delaware Institute on Public Administration and with the cooperation of Denrec. There will be members of the city council on this committee. There will be members of the planning commission, or a member at least of the planning commission on this new ad hoc special executive committee. Their chat, their task is to look at the sea level rise issue, our ordinance as proposed and other factors to come up with a recommendation of Mayor and City Council. It was not remanded back to the planning commission. Instead, Mayor and City Council decided to create this new body specifically to include citizen participation, to come up with, to review the situation and come up with recommendations for Mayor and City Council. So I think our role, Sumner, at the moment is a supportive one. Some one or ones of us will participate in that committee. But I think there's a lot of data that you referred to, some of which we've used, some of which we have had known to us, but not really had a chance to incorporate. I think I behoove us to help collect that. I've also solicited today in my note, as you saw, both Anne Marie and Janelle to help us with data sourcing so that we can be, give them a jumpstart on information that's out there, ready, ready to be mined, ready to be used, ready to help come up to some of the same answers. Hopefully that we did. But this is sea level rise. And let me lastly say with apologies to everyone else who was involved in this. I, I, I think we made a mistake. I made a mistake by sending up two ordinances at the same time. The source water protection and sea level rise got commingled and overwhelmed with some of the opposition to one and really didn't have a chance to focus on the details and the depth of the other. So we have, I have to learn from that. We have to learn from that to be very careful about not commingling things that have close proximity to one another, but also might have a different level of response from the community that, that causes some problems. I frankly think the sea level rise would have done much better on its own without having the other subject of the ordinance, the other ordinance at the same time. So be it. That's where we are. That's where we're going. So sea level rise will be sort of treading water for the moment, other than I hope helping to collect and identify relevant data and other information that sources that we can use to support this new movement by Mayor and City Council. Khalil, do you want to amplify or change anything I said?
Drew, that was a pretty good characterization. I mean, I, I know just probably a little bit more than you do. When I saw that on the agenda, I haven't really, you know, been involved in, in the rationale behind that. I am meeting with the mayor tomorrow morning to discuss that amongst a few other things. So I'll probably have a little more insight then. But I do know that the work that this commission has done will play a, obviously a very key role in, in any actions that we take moving forward. I mean, you, you got the findings that you guys have reached are going to think, at least in my view, are going to, are going to form the basis of, of what we review with the folks at the University of Delaware and other experts.
Well, Khalil, just carry forward the message, if you would, that the commission and its members stand ready to support, not just to participate on the committee, but in any way possible so that we can get the best decision for the community. And there's no pride of authorship here. We just want the best result.
I will indeed.
Can I ask one question? In the discussion on Monday night, I, I can't remember, it might've been Anne Marie, maybe it was Janelle, suggested that there's going to be sort of a shift in focus of what the UD IPA guys are going to be doing. Can somebody describe, sort of explain what that's going to be?
Sure.
Just too early?
No. So what we're going to do is kind of like we're working with them. We met with them today and we're going to work on getting some public outreach to regarding environmental items that then we can kind of take into, you know, more information, educational information, listening sessions, so then we can start putting together based on what everybody's hearing to start making pieces back and, and turning that back into the ordinance and, and getting the ordinance back going forward.
I, I, I mean, my, my personal feeling, this is just me, given everything that I've seen, is that, you know, we may have pushed the ordinance too early. I think there's, there's a lot to be said for focusing more on laying better groundwork, getting a better body of information out there so that everybody better understands what's going on. I feel like there's a disconnect. There's a lot of, in reading through the comments, there, there are a lot of, there seems to be a lot of confusion about what's going on and what will go on. And I know when we first met with the UD IPA folks, there was sort of two threads that built about where we would, where we would go, how we'd spend our time with those folks. And I remember Ted being a proponent, and I was sort of behind this as well, that, that we needed to, you know, do a better job of, of putting together information, you know, sort of building a common ground. And I'm hoping that that's what's going to go on.
Yeah. The first step is kind of a listening session with the public. Just, we've got a couple of questions we want to ask, hear what they have to say. So we're getting, we'll be rolling that out in a couple of weeks along with an online survey that people can, can take, and then we're going to take that information, study it and see what are the best next steps based on what we're hearing.
And who will do the studying?
Well, I, I think we've had in recent week and a half or two weeks, we've had a lot of input. We've not had any answers. I mean, when somebody says something that is sort of countermanded by the science, there has to be a way to go back and say that. I mean, when we presented the, the ordinance, we presented, you know, whatever it was, 20 slides, five wishful pictures, 10 minutes, and you know, five more of text as the ordinance. Let's discuss that. And some things were said. Some were true, some were not, some were based on probably not inadequate assumptions. So I think some of what you have to do in addition to getting input is to answer. And, you know, whether that's, you know, thank you for your input. Here's what, what the science says is a reasonable part of the discussion because and I don't know how you're going to do that, but, but don't just open yourself up to input without planning on making some points about the science.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's going to come down and, and a farther and a, at a, a different step. Because what we heard from that public hearing, there was, there was a lot of, lot of, you know, a lot of positions, a lot of information. And we thought like, let's take a step, let's work on the outreach with the public because we heard there was concerns about that. Let's, let's hear from the public. And then we'll take that information and then we'll start kind of moving in the next step of, okay. So we're talking about this so then we can get them the right information because if, if somebody's focused on one thing and not something else, so we can get them the correct information that they're looking for. And that's kind of how the, we're, we're, the UD is kind of looking at this is to, to take it a step by step process with listening, getting information out and then working with that, that committee that the mayor is putting together.
One thing I, one thing I want to add, this is Anne Marie, is that the, the public hearing is not the venue to correct what the public's saying. It's an information, it's, it's for the elected officials to hear what the public's saying. So I think, so that, I think what, what, based on the, the information that the public was bringing forward and the concerns, it, having the University of Delaware and, and Denrec's resilient community partnership as a tool gives us an opportunity to better engage the public and have, have ordinances that they will buy into, you know, before they're in it.
A good goal. Hopefully it'll work. Any other questions about sea level rise before we move on to chapter 140? John?
Yes, we had our first chapter 170 subcommittee.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Chapter 170 meeting where we kind of looked at the action plan items that had come to us and we started tackling some of those. We tiptoed into definitions a little bit, which is also what spurred the other discussions about other subcommittees working on definitions. We want to make sure that they're consistent throughout everything that we're doing. And we have another meeting on May 25th where we look to make more progress overall.
Got quite on your, quite a bit on your plate, but it sounds like you've got it organized and moving ahead and it's going to take some time, but thank you for that. All right. Let's go to individual reports. Glenn, do you have anything that you would like to alert us to?
Only thing I wanted to mention is just a couple of things. If the city council took action on Monday, we've already talked about the sea level rise and the new committee that's been set up there. They did put a moratorium in on the actual recharge areas. So those provisions of section 19775 that have been talked about quite a bit recently, you know, predominantly between the canal and the, and the bay, but some others as well. Those provisions are essentially suspended for six months to work on something that would be more appropriate to address the excellent recharge areas. They approved some of the burden waivers that you all worked on previously. They granted the Gottwald and Harden parcel consolidation. That's the one that was consolidated, then partitioned and now reconsolidated. They did approve the Christine King minor subdivision on Schley. And then they scheduled public hearings on Lewis Waterfront Preserve, the Lewis Dairy property at 660 Pilot Town 2, for that change in, in zoning from this industrial to R2. And then they set a public hearing for the Lewis Middle School State Plan. So those are all things that you've worked on and that's, that's where they sit at this point.
Now, there has been some pushback on some, belatedly on some of those issues, thinking specifically about Schley and the correspondence that's come in. That doesn't really directly affect us, but it is an issue for the city, correct?
That, that's right. There is a concern raised about during the city council meeting when they approved the, the Schley Avenue minor subdivision, a question was asked about whether there was any public opposition. And in connection with the minor subdivision, the city has received no comments from the public in opposition to, to this subdivision. There was a petition and there was opposition at the Board of Adjustment level. And Janelle clarified that during the meeting, but I don't think all the members of the public heard that, that, that the Board of Adjustment proceeding is, is a different proceeding with a different record. So the proceeding that was before the planning commission and then before city council last night on the subdivision question, there is no opposition in, in, in regard to that portion of the application.
Well, let's reiterate, just correct me, Glenn, when I misspeak. I don't want to put my lawyer hat on too much. The Board of Adjustment, as we all know, is a body of final decision. They are the ones that make the recommendations or that make the decision, not a recommendation unlike us. And we based our decision based on their decision. So there is an appeal process for the Board of Adjustment decisions, which apparently wasn't followed in this instance. But as far as the planning commission is concerned, we have to proceed based on what the Board of Adjustment did and not based on any other independent assessment. When they granted the variance, that was the basis upon which we could make a decision.
That's right. I couldn't say any, any better. That's exactly right.
All right. Tom Panetta, as one of our new liaisons, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Um, nothing.
Khalil, anything else you'd like to bring up?
Immuted. You're muted, Khalil.
My apologies. Sorry. I'm just, I'm thrilled to be here and, and, and work with you folks and, and the meetings that I have attended. Your previous meetings, I've always been impressed with the level of organization and expertise and, and collegiality. So I'm looking forward to doing what I can to help advance your goals. Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you, Khalil.
Thank you. Thank you, Summer.
I think the chairman froze. So Melanie, as the new vice chair, it's all you.
And you're muted, Melanie.
You're muted. You're muted, Melanie.
I think she's working on it.
Okay. I think that the minutes from the last meeting is on the agenda. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think that's probably the next thing.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I take over here on the minutes? I have a specific minute issue.
Okay.
I talked to Drew about this too, because in the last Friday's Cape Gazette, there was a letter to the editor about the Lewis Waterfront Preserve, which misquoted me. It says, Lewis Waterfront Preserve will jeopardize flood insurance. And the author ends with a paragraph saying that the Honorable Joe Hockner made a comment regarding this as affordable housing in Lewis. Well, I went back to the minutes and my comment, which was misconstrued, I said, Mr. Hockner voted yes to the motion to approve stating he was in favor of townhouses to bring some reasonably priced housing to the area. That's how I described Lewis Waterfront Preserve as reasonably priced townhouse housing. Okay. But then I went on to reread this letter to the editor. And there are multiple disconnects in this letter about including that developer claims not to be building in the floodplain. Well, he wouldn't be building if he was building in the floodplain. And that the a developer near the flood, I mean, this, it, it's just, and he even says to the best of his knowledge, Lewis has no floodplain mitigation managers. Well, we have two. We have two on board. So, and that flood insurance rates will go up as long as there's this high density develop near the floodplain, which would be anywhere. So anyway, I just wanted to correct the, the public perception. And actually, my, clear my name about talking about affordable housing. It was reasonably priced housing in the area. That was my comment.
So Joe, you're okay with the, with the statement in the meeting minutes?
Yeah, the, the meeting minutes are correct. It was just one particular member of the public who misconstrued not only that, but several items about the Lewis Waterfront Preserve.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other issues with the minutes? Okay. Do I have?
Do we accept the minutes as presented?
I second.
And Nancy seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Janelle, I think that concludes the agenda. Yes?
Correct.
There's no other, there's no other thing that, that, that Drew had?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, good.
I'm not either, but do you want to take a five minute recess just in case he comes on? I'm not either, but do you want to take a five-minute recess just in case he comes on and has something else? I mean, I guess it's it's to you, Madam Vice Chair.
What's the feeling of Lord?
He might actually be listening via phone.
Maybe there's a way, there's a way that he can, he can submit something in the chat.
Yeah.
Just to just confirm that he had nothing else. In fact, that's him. I did see that telephone come in.
Yeah.
A muted phone.
I think that may be him, yeah.
That is him.
He just needs to unmute.
What if the internet isn't working? How does that happen?
So while we're waiting for this, I'm going to, I'm going to fill the, just want to make a comment about the floodplain thing that Joe was just talking about. I think it was in the flood-ready community training that several of us did with the state. I read so many things on seal horizon, may have come somewhere else. Something like 30% of floodplain, or sorry, of flooding insurance claims happen in, on properties, come from properties that are outside the floodplain. So just because you're not in the floodplain doesn't mean that you're not going to get flooding. And I think it's something all of us need to keep in mind. I I mean, the very first water workshop we had, I think, is it Janine O'Donnell?
Jean.
Who who spoke to us from the insurance perspective, and she said the same thing, basically.
Yeah, you are correct.
I'm back. I know what happened.
I think Drew's now unmuted if we want to. You you froze up.
Yeah, I know. I'm still, I can't get back in for some reason. I don't know why. Booted me out. So I guess I got to pay more money.
While you were gone.
I saw you pass the 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 meeting minutes. I just had two more comments and then we can get a motion to adjourn. Looking into the future, as we've talked about, there are a number of things that we want to tackle this year and then take a quick look at the comp plan maybe early next year. So this fall, there are a couple of areas that I think we might have time to get into, depending on application issues and other things. One of which is a continuation of something we started before but never really finished, which is an in-depth examination of the Marine Commercial District. We know there are some issues involving the passage of those properties and the rights to the Marine Commercial District to the next generation or to someone else. And we need to, I think, go back and take a look at that and what we want to do to help preserve, protect, or not, the Marine Commercial District. Secondly, again, in the same timeframe, later this year, in the fall, maybe, we want to look at 197 as we're looking at 170, particularly 197, obviously, as it pertains to the Planning Commission. But that's a, that'll be a big undertaking, and we really want to make sure we have time for that when we get to it. The last thing I want to mention that I don't know how we do, so I'm going to look to my experts, my other eight commissioners and our liaisons. It would be important to me to begin to think about the Planning Commission in the context of not just for Lewis, but how we relate to the other communities around us. I mean, there is the Association of Coastal Towns and other things, but we're all really acting independent of each other. And it seems to me that in dealing with a lot of these issues, it's not just a Lewis issue, it is a Sussex County issue, it's a Delaware issue, it's, you know, Rehoboth and Lewis and all others in between and around us. So I want to think about how we might establish a relationship with these other entities as we're working on some of these important issues, including sea level rise going forward. How we might have a better relationship with these other organizations so that we can accomplish some things collectively and hopefully have even more impact for the future in improved, better circumstances. But as I said, that's just a nascent thought. I want your input, your ideas, your guidance on that, as well as Charles and Anne Marie's and others, to think about how we might have some ongoing relationship with the other jurisdictions that affect us and and we affect them and work on a common scheme to improve all of our situations. So that's all I had. I apologize. I don't know what happened, but whoever wanted to kick me out, you're successful. So it worked. But I can't, still can't get back in. It's just trolling. Won't let me back in. I'm getting the exit Zoom screen saying you're done. So if there's nothing else, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Is there a second? Is there any opposition? Otherwise, no. All right, hearing none. Good night. We are adjourned at 6:55 and thank goodness, as I purpose, as it was a relatively short meeting for us. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Bye.